All right, I have six o'clock, so I declare this meeting of the Patrick County Board of Supervisors to be in order. Pastor Tommy Shepherd of Stuart United Methodist Church will give the invocation.
Let us pray together. Gracious and loving God, we thank you, Lord, for the day. Thank you for this. We pray, oh, God, that you bless, teach, guide, comfort, guide. Pray, oh, for your faith, saving, greater power. Pray for prayer, prayer.
Mr. Simmons, would you lead us?
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Let us remain standing for a moment of silence to honor those who serve us in the military, in our sheriff's department, and first respond. Anybody seated? I want to remind anyone who's speaking, please speak into the mic. We're doing a new filming of the I don't want to say service, but that's not quite what anyway, the meeting. And so we need to talk into our microphones, same for us up here. All right. The meeting agenda, I know there's some additions, Ms. Hazelwood.
Yes, we need to amend the agenda and add Ms. Jones, she has an amendment under regular session under approval of the bill's claims appropriations. We have under presentation proclamation for Anchor Commission 50th anniversary. We need to add a request for a public hearing and ordinance to enact an ordinance revenue sharing for solar energy projects and energy storage systems under new business immediately following another addition, which is the fiscal year 2023 school budget amendment request. We have closed meeting, we have personal matters, 2.2-3711A1 transfer station complaint, contract matters, 2.2-370829, project save, real estate within acquiring land and/or property within the jurisdiction of the county of Stewart.
All right, with those additions, do we have a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Thank you, thank you. Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Ms. Starwalt?
Aye.
I vote aye also. Approval of the meeting minutes, do we have any questions, comments, additions? Then I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Ms. Starwalt?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye also. Approval of the bills, claims, and appropriations, any compo- oh, you got to speak.
I do, I have an amendment. On page one of the first bill's claims and appropriations received, I need to add $20,000 in appropriations to the asset forfeiture fund state. And that's to cover the expenditure on page 39 for liquidity services operations for a vehicle for the sheriff's department.
Okay. All right, with that, any questions? With that addition, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Mr. Kendrick?
Aye.
Ms. Starwalt?
Aye.
And I'll vote aye also. This is throwing me off, Mr. Perry is not going to be here tonight. He's taking a vacation, a well-deserved vacation, so sort of throwing me off. I keep wanting to call his name. All right, first order of business, we have a representative from Vaco here tonight, James Hutzler, is that correct? Good. And we'll ask if Scotty will come up? Sure.
Seems like I'm giving the testimony, I like it.
That's right, yeah.
All right, well, I have here a pretty award from the Virginia Association of Counties, Mr. Chair, members of the board, it is great to be here in Patrick County. This is the farthest southwest I've ever been in my travels with the Virginia Association of Counties, so it is a real treat to be this far from Richmond. It's my distinct privilege to present you all the Vaco Achievement Awards for the benefit of your constituents who may not know what the Virginia Association County is or does. We've existed since 1934 to serve your, to serve and support your efforts as county officials. We support counties in many ways. First is through advocacy efforts in the state legislature and also at the federal level. We also serve counties through educational programs, member services, and communications efforts. Since 2003, we have had our achievement award programs to recognize counties in the many amazing, great, new, and fantastic programs and initiatives that counties come up with. And hopefully that these can provide public services and identify programs that could serve as models for other counties to emulate. This is Patrick County's first achievement award. And I'm under the impression that we have representative from the Henry, Franklin County, Henry County, and Patrick County, Blue Ridge Fire and EMS Academy to talk more about the program. Yeah?
I don't like to sit here. This is the program that y'all allowed us to put two into Virginia this year. Both graduated, both are doing great. Come out at different times, of course, but they are been a great asset to the county. And this is a zero-to-hero program where they go in with absolutely no training, they come out firefighter one and emergency medical technician level, the basic level. It's been a great asset to not only this county, but Franklin County, Patrick County. We filled a lot of positions that would have went on field if it hadn't have been able to join this.
Thank you.
So like I said, it's fantastic to be here, this program is fantastic, the regionalism shown through it just shows that, you know, counties can come together and create amazing new and important programs like this because, I mean, it's EMS and fire, it's important and, you know, for retention and hiring these folks, so it's a great program. And we're happy to be here and present the award.
Thank you.
Yeah?
Thank you.
All right. Yeah. Thank you, James. He came down from Richmond, is going back tonight, so has my admiration. Thank you. All right, do we have a representative here from Anchor? All right.
Hi. Just around, I don't like sitting down here. I do that too much. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, thank y'all for your much, many supports you've given us over the years. This year, as far as this resolution is concerned, is about the 50th anniversary of Anchor. And we've been serving Patrick County, Henry County, and Martinsville for 50 years this year, and we couldn't have done it without your support for the many years we've been in existence. We pride ourselves on being very responsive to the needs of the courts, of the court service unit, and to the governing bodies as well. And we greatly appreciate everything y'all have done for us over the years, and we really appreciate the resolution honoring our 50th anniversary. Yes, sir.
All right, if you want to turn to please. The Anchor Commission is celebrating its 50th anniversary during this year. And board members and staff of this finite organization during their 50-year existence have followed the mission of the organization, which is to provide a new chance for youth. While they remain close to home, Anchor provides comprehensive care and individualized treatment to assist youth and their families in achieving optimal health and well-being. Therefore, board members and staff, since board members and staff are dedicated to providing programs as an alternative to secure detention, we recognize this service model is designed to assure public safety through programs offered while the participating juveniles are introduced to activities that increase their awareness of the effects of delinquent behavior on others and consequences for their actions, as well as developing the desire to contribute positively to their community. And whereas Anchor Commission is a collaborative partner that supports youth and families and works to provide supervision and services to keep youth out of detention and with their families while remaining in the community, I, Claudia Lo, Chairman of the Patrick County Board of Supervisors, do hereby proclaim and declare 2022 as Anchor Commission's 50th anniversary year and urge our citizens to join with me in recognizing the value and importance Anchor Commission services bring to our community.
Thank you.
All right.
Okay. Do you have a picture?
Hey, Mr. Chairman, I'm, just want to let everybody know, I'm going to leave some pamphlets about what Anchor does and my business card with, if that's all right, and if any of y'all would like to, or anybody in the art gallery would like to take one, I encourage you to, to see what, to see if you can read more about what we do. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Okay, now we're going to take public comments, we have Norma Bosenmeyer, Smith River.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a response to Mr. Atkins' presentation last month. And I commend Mr. Sean Atkins and his work to open a childcare center in Patrick County by using a vacant building on Ryecove Street in Stewart. But I think closing Ryecove to through, thorough, through traffic is a very bad idea. This street gets used by a lot of travelers every day in and out of Upper Stewart. I personally use this street when traveling from Upper Main Street to Lower Stewart, instead of making a left at the end of Main Street onto Woods Brother Drive. Traffic coming up the hill there is not visible until you're out in the road, and I have to hold my breath and pull out. So I use Ryecove as a safer option with much better visibility. I wasn't quite, I wasn't totally clear of the intention of closing Ryecove after Mr. Atkins' presentation last month. But if the intention is to cross children to a playground, I think it can be done in a better way than totally closing the street. If the intention is to make a playground in the former street, that to me is not a very good idea either because that section of the street is very steep, not suitable for playground equipment or young walkers and runners. I think this needs a lot more thought and study, and I hope other options other than closing Ryecove will be explored. Thank you on that. And then I, on a much lighter note, I hope everyone is planning on driving through the Festival of Lights this week at DeHart Park. There are almost 60 businesses that put up displays there from different businesses and community organizations. I personally wove thousands of light into hardware cloth for the Master Gardener display, and if I say so myself, it's really beautiful. There's so many volunteers just buzzing around the park since Thursday, and the whole purpose is to raise money for renovation of the park's bathrooms. And even more so to show holiday and community spirit. It's such a wonderful thing, and if you move through your meeting quickly tonight, you might be able to even get down there tonight, it's open till late. So I hope everyone will support this wonderful event, and thank you and happy holidays to you.
All right, thank you very much. All right, Mike Folk?
Good evening, board. I am here to address the possibility of merging ARAT Rescue with Blue Ridge Rescue. We've been talking to members of the community, and for the most part, we have all negative comments for the response from our community members. Both rescue squads are definitely against it. My colleague, Billie Aldridge, he will present signature papers of many, many members of the community, ARAT and Blue Ridge, Willis Gap area, that are totally against that merger. Not only that, the, also the closing of possible, possibility of closing Vesta Rescue Squad. The only outcome I see from merging or closing rescue squads will be less EMS service to the area. There's possibly, we have two trucks, Blue Ridge has two trucks, plus two buildings. If you merge those two squads and give funding to either one of those entities, one or the other of the buildings will have to be not used because of funding. So that means one rescue squad will have to take on that entire area, which is the whole southwestern side of the county, other than at Shouse area for CCDF. We come from, I think, Dan Valley Farm Road, over the ARAT area, the Willis Gap area, and on to Willis Gap Mountain. Funding for that, we do understand now that there is a windfall of 300,000 extra dollars in the, where personal property taxes were increased, and you're expecting a $300,000 increase in income, and then we have understood there's $600,000, or roughly $600,000 in income. We ask that maybe some of that money be used to help support these rescue squads to keep them open. Also, I have a question for the board. Their, the actual program that we just received an award from, why was that not offered to the volunteers?
It was.
No, it wasn't.
It was offered to David, wasn't it, Scotty? It was?
We didn't, we didn't even know about it.
Open application.
How would you know about it if nobody told you?
How was it advertised, Scotty?
For the paid service, not for volunteer service. Okay, I understand. I'd just like for the community to know that. Very little support for volunteers. So, one other thing, and expenses, another thing that the county dropped the ball on, we just had monitors inspected today at a tune of $3,500 for four volunteer rescue squads because when the county, for the paid service, they signed a contract with Stryker to do the monitors, but excluded all the volunteer agencies. So we had, our monitors, they have to be inspected once a year, it's $518 per monitor, and that's a state regulation, each monitor has to be done. So the four squads, ARAT, Vesta, CCDF, and Blue Ridge, today spent over $3,500 getting those seven monitors inspected out of our pocket. So, you know, I'd just like for someone to try to stay on top of stuff like that for the volunteer system. But my request, I guess, is, in general, is to please continue to support your volunteers because I can assure you that merging these squads will be detrimental to the county and the covering of the areas. Thank y'all very much.
All right, thank you. I would just like to say that I know I said at least four times at that meeting that we were not going to close any volunteer station. And as far as I'm concerned, as long as I'm here, I will never vote to close any. And I think other people said the same thing. Merging was simply an idea thrown out, not, has not seriously been brought forward. Mm-hmm. We have Billy Aldridge.
Thank y'all for listening to me. I agree with a lot of stuff that Mike said there and things. We basically took this back to our communities after we kind of got that sprung on us the other night with Dr. Edsall's stuff about merging, and all, we didn't know y'all were even talking about that. One thing, Ralph Hand, Dr. Edsall said that the squads were two miles apart. I just happened to measure them today, they're 6.1 miles apart. So I got thinking about that after I measured it, and you've got Station Eight and Jip Stewart, who are both paid services, 3.7 miles apart. So I don't see the issue right there on that, and thanks. As far as money goes, yes, I put a thing out for people to sign and all, and I may have misunderstood you there, but I still got almost 20 pages of people that said that they wanted to keep both squads. Excuse me. I had also a community meeting and things, and it was everybody, nobody there, didn't, you know, lose a squad anywhere, and things. They were all in favor of all kinds of ideas, which I was glad I had a community building because I got better ideas out of it, you know. And I'd suggest that about anybody on this stuff. We, as a, as a community over there, feel like a lot of times we're ignored, you know, that we just kind of get bumped, and I know you hear that too and things here. You know, we don't, a lot of us don't even read a paper, the truth, you know, you know, because all of our business, all our work, you know, we all work in North Carolina or whatever, and things, very few people come this way. So it's kind of like we're out of touch over there, in a way. I wish that would improve, and thanks, we could communicate much better if you do that and things. As far as the money that Mike was talking about is allocated or whatever there, I know nothing about that, so I just wish you would spend more time, and I invite each and every one of y'all to visit us over there. I think you would understand it better if you would come to the squads and actually visit the building, meet the people and things, and we could have people from the community there, as far as that goes. You know, they're not going to bite you. So, you know, I have a great bunch I work with, yes, I've been a paramedic for 35 years, I've done this county for 25 years, and I was a medic. I'm Captain Blue Ridge, I gladly give it to one of the members. Because, you know, I'm Captain Blue Ridge, I gladly give it to one of the members, because, you know, it just wears you down, and things. I was notified today when Mary came in, I can hear you okay, when Mary came and checked the monitors, that I had a monitor that was just about totally out of date. So I've got to upgrade that monitor. Well, I'm kind of leery of it now that all this stuff's going on, because that's going to be somewhere between 20 and 40,000. And I don't want to rob that from the money in my community, if y'all are not going to support us. So I'd like some kind of commitment from y'all on that, because that's a huge thing to do right there, you know? And I know it's kind of putting y'all on the spot here, but I need to know these things. Somehow all this kind of got jumbled together in the short term right here, and I had to roll everything over, you know? And this, which you'll probably want to see these, but all this is just one week's worth. And I didn't even go pick up stuff in the last two or three days, so there'll be more, you know, if you want them, and things. I think it got the community back involved in this. I know there was, there's a good side to this, because the community got really involved in, you know, really interested, and like I said, great ideas about fundraisers and all kinds of stuff, and things. And you said you're still going to support us on money, so that's okay. That's what you do as an administration, and things. So I'd like a commitment out of you somehow on this monitor, because you understand where I'm coming from, don't you?
Right. Well, I guess we could take an, does anybody on, on the Board favor doing away with any of the volunteers?
My only question, if I could ask, you're a good person to ask, is, and I don't know why, where everybody thinks that we're thinking about closing the squad or whatever, but that was not even Dr., well, Dr. Edsall's recommendation. And there's no backdoor stuff going on here. We heard buzz that Dr. Edsall wanted to talk to us about maybe combining stations. The meeting you all were at was the first meeting we had with him.
We actually came for different reasons.
So we were just as surprised, as you all were surprised. My question to you is, in regards to him making the suggestion about combining the two squads, is we're, we're assisting with, well, we have the two buildings in the rotation for the capital improvements, and then we pay for insurance for both squads, but the same people are running at both squads, is my understanding. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So.
That was kind of my idea, and Mike went along with it.
So my question is, is why, why, if you have the same people running at both buildings, what would be an issue with just having the one location? I guess that's my question. I'm not saying combine or shut them down. All this is just as new to us as it is to you. So, but that's my, I'm just trying to, to learn.
Okay. I have a question back here in a minute on that one.
That's fine.
Thanks. As you know, COVID hit. It wiped out everybody everywhere, and things. We got down to maybe six people running calls, because everybody else was scared to death. We were scared too, because somebody has to go after these people, you know? And that was hard, when you go back to family, and you walk in the door, you got to shed your clothes, take a shower, and all that stuff right then, and things. And we got down to small people. Well, they're just now starting to come back, if we don't get them scared to death again, you know, somehow. No. And, you know, I've got ALS providers that are nervous going on calls by themselves, so I go with them. Tell them I won't be here forever, but I can come and be there with them, you know? Somebody's got to be able to come after me one day, the way I look at it, and things, whether it's paid or volunteer, and things. But the communities love the volunteer people better than they do your paid service, I'm sorry. But they just look at it different as their neighbors, and all. And, you know, we probably spend a little bit more time with the people, you know, when we're actually there, than just grabbing them up and taking them, because I know that from working at Surrey, we was always under time. We got to keep going, keep going, keep going. Get them, don't stand around and talk. Just grab them, they either go or they don't, type deal, and things. So, yeah, we spend time with them, you know? Because, you know, I learn a lot more about them that way, and try to figure out what's wrong with them. Not everybody needs to go to the hospital. Some people just need some support with vital signs and stuff like that, and all. So I enjoy the volunteer thing a lot better than I did the paid. That's sad in a way, but I do, thanks, because, you know? But we're still held to all the same standard as your paid service is, and things. You know, I was a critical care medic in Surrey, you know? Well, they don't cross over, so I never renewed it that part here, you know, in Virginia, you know? But it's been so much fun like that. But back on, your thing is, why do we have two different squads? Because I think they hit on it when we were in that little meeting that day, they had a big rift sometime years ago, you know? And I remember I bought land on Willis, off Willis Gap over there, and I was remodeling my house, and they said, we need some more ALS help. So I started helping them some that way, before I even moved up here. And they said, well, we're not with them, because, you know, we didn't get along with them, you know? Which is understandable, not everybody gets along. So the community stepped up and said, we're going to build you a building, you know? Literally, they did, and all there. They had old Dodge Amulets at one time, and I don't know if you'd want to even step in it, the way it looked, it was so horrible looking. I look at pictures of that and think this started that way, you know? But it stayed separate, and both of them have blossomed since then. I guess that fixed the problem, you know? And they've done good. Both of us are really financially okay, and things. So, you know, the way I look, we're down to the same people. Is that so horrible? We still come get you, you know? I mean, really. We, if it's in my area, I guess you'd say the Willis Gap area over there, we take my truck, or whatever there. If it's in ARAT's area, we take their truck. That way you're dividing up any potential money that comes in from soft billing, you know? Yeah. Mike's area is a little bit bigger than mine, because you added the CCDF area to it like that, and all, which is stretching us sometimes on response time there, and I would get over there, and things. But, you know, my trucks are a 98 model Ford and 2006 model, you know? And they're still running fine, thanks. So I, we don't, we were thrifty, does that make any sense? So yes, that's how we get financially. But to get back to it, you know, what was your question?
The question is, you're running the exact same crew at both squads.
Yeah.
So why, I don't understand why it would be an issue to combine.
Okay. Why is it an issue?
That's what, that's what I'm asking you.
Y'all were asking that question.
Yeah, why?
So it would be y'all's issue. There has to be some reason for saying that.
You have the same people volunteer, the same volunteers, which are so appreciated, running out of Blue Ridge Rescue Squad, that are running out of the ARAT Rescue Squad. Am I correct?
Correct.
Right. So we're paying double the insurance for these people at this squad and this squad.
So it's the money.
It's the same, no, it's not just about the money. It's, it, why, why would it be an issue? Why, why do you all have an issue if we wanted to combine the two into one? Because it's the same people running. Why do you want to run out of two different buildings, and we have two different squads in the capital improvement thing, and the two different insurances? I want, you know, I want all of us to work together, volunteers, county to work together. I'm just trying to understand from, from your point of view, why would that be an issue? I don't understand the importance of having the same people run at two different buildings six miles away. Is that, is it about, I mean, if it's, you said, you said yourself, it's about personality. There was personality issues. Well, to me, that's like, well, then if it's a personality, and it, maybe you're in it for the wrong reason. I mean, this should be about saving lives, not about personality issues.
More to just saving lives.
So.
Well, I, I think maybe we need to do this outside the meeting.
That's fine. I'm just trying to understand why.
I don't think we're getting anywhere.
I'm sorry for taking up your time.
Oh, no. It's fine, but you asked the question, that's.
But I was asked to come back here.
Right.
By the community, and it's the whole community.
Right.
And things.
Okay, well, that'll be a good subject for discussion later.
Okay.
Did you have anything else?
That was it. Do you need these?
Oh, yeah, that'd be, yeah. Thank you.
Have any potential folks, volunteers on the roster there that signed the petition?
Probably.
That'd be awesome.
Because, because that was a benefit to this coming up, is because more people stood up. My Ladies Auxiliary is now Ladies and Guys Auxiliary, and things, and has several members now.
Good.
Great.
That's great.
That was a good thing. I don't.
Mm-hmm. All right. Thank you so much. We have. You can look at. Hi, Jane Falk.
And I know you don't want to hear it, but I'll hit Denise's thing.
Thank you.
The squad separated over 26 years ago, because of some of the people that were in ARAT, who couldn't get along with anybody. So, anyway, that was 25 years ago. One of the reasons you have two squads is because if the call is in Willis Gap, and my husband is coming from Mount Airy, he can meet Billy at Willis Gap, and the time that they get to the patient is cut in half. Whereas if he has to go to ARAT to meet Billy, then the time will be double what it would be. And it's the same way either way.
That's what I want to hear.
That it's the same way either way. The only reason we even are on the roster at Blue Ridge is because of insurance. The insurance told us if we ran for Blue Ridge, and we're not on their roster, and something happened to us, and we're in their truck, we're not covered. So you either give up service, or you have the same people running the same place. And of course, a lot of us have been on the squad roster at Carroll County too, but it's just where you run and what you want to do. That, I hope answers that.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Um, and I can reiterate what they said about merging and closing and all that stuff, and I'm not going to. I am actually going to hit a little budget stuff here, because I know y'all are going into it.
Don't you miss that?
Yes, I do. I'll come over and help you, Denise. When y'all are looking at the budget, I want y'all to think that this is Patrick County with 17,800 potential taxpayers and a square mileage of 483. We are not Henry County. Henry County has less square mileage than we do, but they have 51,000 potential taxpayers. So please look at cutting that budget. And I don't mean in the rescue squad, because we need all the money we can get. As Mike said, the monitors cost us big money today. We also need to buy, we need another monitor ourselves, which is $40,000. But the squad or the community, one will have to come up with. We also do fundraisers for extra money, because the 16,800 that y'all give us per year will not pay our insurance, which is $8,000. After we pay our insurance, we can't pay the light bill, the phone bill, and buy medical supplies. And you all do help some with the medical supplies, but you don't help with all of them. There's no way you can. I appreciate what you do, and hope you do more. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any comments or a close? Anybody want?
Thank you.
I would say that my wife ran a group home up in Vesta for a lot of years, and she said anytime she had to call the rescue squad, they were there. And so she really appreciated their service. All right, then I will close the public comment, and, um, all right. We get to go to the exciting stuff. Mr. Scott Wickham, the audit report.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman, for the exciting part. The good news is, it's not too exciting.
There you go.
But it's not bad.
It's not bad, no, so. But yeah, I'm Scott Wickham, and I'm partner in charge of the county's audit. I'm here to go over the results of that audit for the year ending June 30th, 2022. I know that I just passed out copies to you all right before we started, so as you review them later on, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out to me about those. I will go ahead and point out too, that these copies do say draft. As of today, we were waiting on the attorney response to verify any outstanding litigation. I did get that response right before the meeting, so I expect to be able to issue a final report tomorrow with minimal changes. But we'll go, go over the results as they are tonight. I'll go through the audit report, the thicker report, and discuss a few points in that as well. So, starting on page two, you have the independent auditors' report, and this is the opinion on the financial statements. Again, the county has received an unmodified or a clean, good opinion. That means the numbers presented in the report are materially accurate. A couple additional paragraphs, and a lot of times I usually say, years ago, a good, clean opinion had three paragraphs. There's quite a few additional paragraphs in the report now. This is still a good, clean opinion for the county. One of the additional paragraphs is related to changing accounting principles. Gas B87 for leases has been quite the bear, and caused a lot of accounting issues, and getting that implemented. The county has gotten that implemented, and did have a little impact on the liabilities reported, but really a lot of work for a little bit of an impact there. And then there was also one correction to capital leases there noted. So a few other paragraphs about responsibilities and things noted, and with the length of this report, they pulled the opinion to the beginning. So you will note that the opinion's now in the first section there, and again, is a good, clean opinion. The next section, as I mentioned, this, this report has gotten rather long with lots of information and disclosures, is the management discussion analysis. Lori and the group has done a good job of giving a summary of the overall changes during the year, the balances, and some explanation for some of those changes. So if you're only going to read part of the report, I think that's a good section to Exhibit one on page 16. This is the statement and net position, or the balance sheet, if you will. And you have your various categories of accounting, your assets, deferred outflows, liabilities, deferred inflows, and net position. If you were considered a business, net position would be your net worth, essentially. You see the net investment in capital assets, that is the net worth, that is buildings and vehicles and infrastructure, less all the debt you all have issued to get those items. The restricted items, school construction, that's the balance at the end of the year of the 1% additional tax there. Some of that was used by the schools during the year. You have the, the new opioid that you all just received, and will be receiving, that amount is restricted as well as the transit occupancy. But the unrestricted is what you all have available to use, so about $9.3 million. This is the balance sheet on the full accrual of accounting, which includes all aspects, all long-term assets, long-term liabilities, everything for the net impact there. And your business-type activities do include the TSA activity. On page 18, exhibit three, this is the balance sheet on the modified accrual basis of accounting, so a more short-term version, and a lot more zoomed in on the county. So you have your general fund and the asset forfeiture fund there. You'll see that the fund balance would be essentially the net worth of this short-term modified basis of accounting, and across the bottom, you have the unassigned fund balance, about $12.9 million unassigned fund balance. We'll talk about what that means in a few minutes, but it's a, it's a very good improvement for the county. On page 20, exhibit five, this is the income statement, more summarized version, but this aligns more to your budgeted modified accrual basis, and you can see an increase to the fund balance across the bottom there. All right, and I'm going to move all the way to the back of the report here. There is a whole lot of information disclosure on various pension and those sorts of items. I'm going to move back to page 151, which is the second report that we issued with this financial statement. On page 151 is the gas report, and again, this is an unmodified report with no findings. So all of our testing came back materially clean, no. So all of our testing came back materially clean, no issues noted and reported there. On page 153, this is the uniform and guidance report. And this is our report on federal program testing. We did test this year on COVID-19 ESER at the school board, as well as special education testing over there. All of the funding that's been tested is included in the... For testing is included on page 156 and 157. A lot of those funds this year are related to COVID as they were last year. But again, a good, clean, unmodified opinion with no findings reported on our federal testing. So that's a brief walkthrough of the report, kind of a summary of how that works for you. All good reports with no finding. Any questions on that? I'll move to the smaller handout and go over a few items in that as well. On page two, we have the general fund summary. This is always a very helpful trend information to look at, to see where you were in 2013 to where you are in 2022. You can see the increases across the lines there. Annualized growth rates on the far right there. It is a formula based on the first and last year calculated there, so it can be skewed if you have an unusual first year or last year in that calculation. But overall, property taxes have increased about 3.4% per year over that time period. You'll see all the local taxes increased by about 10%. As I mentioned, you all did have the new additional school tax there. As reporting in this year, that is included in the general fund held for the schools. So that state... County local tax did increase by $1.4 million for the school board there. And then there were some that went to, it was about 400,000 or so, went to the school board, increased the education expenses as well there. Intergovernmental dropped off a little bit this year. That's your state and federal funding. You all did not use all of your ARPA funding. I expect that that will increase as you do, but last year you did use quite a bit of your CRF COVID funding, so that was the increase as well there. Overall, the total expenditures have increased about 3.2% per year. That's a pretty good job of controlling your expenditures. I expect it'd be quite a bit more challenging to do that in the future with inflation trending where it is. Across the bottom, you'll see your fund balance. This is your total fund balance. Your fund balance will include other items that you might have designated for various funds. This isn't the outpour to the general fund, which does include your contendencies and other items like that. On the next page, it gives you a little bit more idea of what that fund balance means. Across the bottom, and essentially a little bit of purple highlight there, you have your ending unassigned fund balance as a percentage of operating expenditures. To me, this is the true measuring of the potential stability of the county. You can see in 2019, you were down to 9%. GFOA, which is a national organization that recommends best practices for counties, recommends a minimum of two months or about 16.67% unassigned fund balance. So in 2019, you were well below that. It looks great to see you all have gone past that now to a pretty strong position. Do want to point out that their recommendation is a very generic recommendation, and each locality would be different. A more rural locality might have less options to obtain funding, so it might need to have a little bit stronger fund balance. Or if you don't have a true capital projects plan set aside, you could have money set aside in this unassigned fund balance that really is meant to be used for capital projects. So as you all evolve that and maybe develop a capital project fund, those are things to think about as you do that. But the improvement the last few years is very, very encouraging for us to see. I know when I sat here in 2019, I was not real happy to have to tell you all the news. So I'm happy to be here tonight and see the improvement. So much, much stronger, much, much more comfortable with the position of the county now. On page four, here's some trend information of the tax assessments. You can see a little bit of increase in personal property, a little bit of increase in state corporation commission, but an overall very, very flat or a little bit of a decline over the tenure trend there. I do expect that when the next year's assessments are included, you will see an increase as it was previously mentioned, with personal property being quite a bit high across the state. On page five, you have the summary of debt. And this, I always want to point out, this is the summary of debt. This is your financial debt. This is not just bonded debt. So this includes items such as your net pension liability as allocated by the state. It includes your net OPEB liability as calculated by actuaries for retirees, social health insurance, and items that are not a payment scheduled debt essentially. They are a accounting liability as required, but they are not a you're going to pay this debt. It's a you may see increased rates to fund this debt in the future, but it's not a guaranteed set payment schedule. So with that, you'll see a significant decrease in the general county debt there. About $4.4 million of that is a decrease in the net pension liability from VRS. VRS did very, very well on their investments, which helped decrease that liability quite a bit. You'll see also for the schools, there's a decrease as well, about $11 million of that is attributed to that same improvement on investments. They think they're going to make about 6.5%, 6.75% each year on their investments, and I believe they made about 30 or 40% in one year. So that significant impact really helped the accounting. Part of the challenge of this accounting is the standard allows them to be a year behind in the reporting. So this is based on investments during 2020. Investments during 2022 did not do as well. So I would expect that liability to climb back up some in next year's reporting, but I want to point that out, that that debt did swing quite a bit. It is that, and it was that way across the state. Most people saw an impact of that or similar. It did also have an increase of $95,000 in the county for leases, implementing that new standard, Gas B87 leases. About $95,000 for the balance on your enterprise leases with the sheriff vehicles. There was a little bit as well for the schools with their copiers, but overall, it was not a truly significant impact on the bottom line with that standard. On page six, you have trend information, the same detailed trend information in a little more visual line there. Page seven, this is the general fund revenues. So you can see essentially where the revenues come from, the various buckets there, and then where they go as well. So for example, you can see Public Safety receives about 30% of the county's general fund expenditures, and the school board receives about 23% of the county's general fund expenditures, and so on. On page eight, you can see the trend in the general fund cash and investments and fund balance. As we discussed in 2019, you were at a pretty low level, much better in 2022. So that's very good to see. Debt per capita, that's actually the numbers identified on that debt summary, but it didn't mention it a minute ago. Your debt per capita is a little bit higher. It's below the average. But for this area, it is a little bit higher than that average includes Fairfax and some of the other larger localities that you expect it to be a little bit higher. So just keep monitoring that. But again, as I said, that debt does include non-payment-related debt, non-scheduled payment debt. So it's something to monitor, but not anything to be concerned about essentially. On page nine, we have similar trend information for the school. You can see right there the revenue line and expenditure line, the 21 to 22 increase. All of those federal funds that have come in, state and federal funds with the ESER and ARPA and COVID funding was a big impact and increase in the revenues and expenditures there. Across the bottom, you'll see they did have a big increase in the fund balance. A lot of that is because the fund balance in general averts back to the county at the end of the year if there's any left over. So it's on an accrual basis, but the balance you see there is the school cafeteria. During COVID particularly, a lot of schools built up a balance in the cafeteria because the funding was so strong from the federal government during that time period. My understanding was the school board was working on a plan to use those funds for betterment of the cafeterias going forward, because there are some limitations on how much they can have in the cafeteria. And again, a little more visual on the school fund there. Page 11, this is a brief summary of that debt pension liability as I was mentioning. The middle column on the discount rate, the 6.75%, that is the amount that's recorded in your financial statements. As you can see, the county's amount was 1.6 million. The teachers' portion of the school board was 11.2 million, and then the non-professional employees was actually an asset, essentially overfunded $500,000. But I always want to point out how significant the estimate is. The actuaries hired by the state put this together in this calculation, and you can see how significant 1% on investments does with what the liability would be. And as I mentioned, they were a great year in 2021, so it really swung the liabilities. I expect it to come back the other way a little bit in the next year we're reporting them. All right, the next few pages will give you some information on upcoming standards, conduit debt obligations, and the triple P and spittas, and then crew leave, compensated absences. I don't foresee any significant impacts on any of those items for you all, but there is more information to read there. On page 18 and 19, this is a report that we do each year for the APA on testing of the VRS accounting system to test birthdays and salaries and hire dates and make sure that information used to calculate that liability is accurate. Also want to make sure that people's retirement is being calculated correctly as well. So we've done the testing for both the county and the school board, and it's a clean report, sent off to the state, but no issues noted for either the county or the school board. All right, on page 20 and 21, as part of our audit, we do go through, and if we find things that are... May not be best practice or might be a noncompliance item that's not significant material to the financial statements, we will have those as recommendations. So that's what these items are here, some items that be approved upon. The conflict of interest forms, that's a common, frequently recommendation. As you're doing those forms for all the boards, make sure that they're being completed thoroughly, and if it doesn't apply, make sure to write an A on it. I know that, from memory, there's one page that is a little bit confusing because I think at the top it says do not complete if you're completing this as a local board member. But then it says the questions one and two, and there's a third question on that page. I would say a lot of board members missed that third question on that page. So just be extra careful. You wouldn't want to mislead anybody if they were trying to look at it or something like that. Have to review those, make sure that's there. The health insurance fund, I talked about how great the county has turned around their financial status. The health insurance fund is probably my bigger concern. I know that you have a negative fund balance. I do want to point out, you did have $80,000 in the bank at June 30th, but the expected liabilities for incurred cost was more than that. So you had negative fund balance essentially at the end of June. So really want to work on a plan to get that health insurance funded to where it is a little more stable position. But overall, really happy with the county in a whole, and I think you all can get that fund balance fixed now that the county is in a better position as well. Transport station, I'm told that you all are working on potentially getting a software or something to fix that up as well, so that'll be good. And then the school board reimbursement request, with that significant, significant increase in amount of funding, it was quite common for school boards to try to make sure they use the funding as best as possible and in time. That may have led to not so many monthly requests like we like. So very common as well during this timeframe with the increased funding. Just want to make sure that everybody's getting those requests in time. Again, the conflict of interest forms for the school board as well. And then there was a couple issues noted during our testing where a small invoice was overpaid, and I'm told the school board has worked with a software vendor to reject duplicate invoices and stop that from... The last two pages here kind of goes over the entire audit in summary as well, similar to items we just talked about, significant estimates, depreciation, collectability, and the net pension and OPEB liabilities, implementation of the new standard, and then the overall process. Overall, we have... We're really happy with the audit process, the staff that everyone worked with did a great job of sending us files ahead of time and then having them here for us when we're on site, and really happy with all of that. And I'm glad that the fund balance is in a much better spot, so I think it's a really good audit. Any questions?
Any questions? I'll have some after I read it.
Sure.
Thank you, Scott.
Yeah, and so if you have further questions, my contact's right in the front of the handout.
All right. All right, I appreciate it. And I would... I would be remiss if I didn't toot our own horn. I think, you know, we have done a good job of getting things straight, and I would recognize those who were on the board before the turnover here and those who are doing it now, that we've worked hard to get it in better shape. But thank you. All right, that was good. Now, the school budget amendment request, what is that? Somebody going to present?
SOQ fund ask.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions?
I said that the request was for grant funding that they were awarded, as well as funding from the state for their SOQ commissions. That is the request as presented to the board.
Get it up, man. All right. Do you have it in your packet? And do we have any questions? Do I have a motion that we approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons? Mr. Kendrick? Ms. Starwell? I'll vote aye also. Right? Old Business?
Mr. Chair, if I may, have the one addition to us for...
A public hearing?
Yes, sir.
Okay, can you tell us what that is?
So this is an ordinance to enact an ordinance of revenue sharing for solar energy projects and energy storage systems. You do have a copy of the ordinance in front of you. We would like to schedule a public hearing to discuss the ordinance on January the 9th as soon as we can at that meeting. I know that's our organizational meeting. We'll have some of those things to take care of before we get into our business. I need to set a time for that, or can we do it as they're asked, follows?
Okay. Do I have a public hearing? Any questions? All right, do I have a motion that we set up a public hearing on January the 9th? Six o'clock, whenever we get to it.
I'll make that motion.
All right, second?
Second.
All right. Mr. Simmons? Mr. Kendrick? Ms. Starwell? I'll vote aye also, so that will be set up public hearing. All right, we have old business, RFP, hauling and disposal of waste.
Would have any questions about those? I presented the last monthly table. We did go back through and look at all of the RFP jet again. The county awards a republic service. That for us.
What's the date that that franchise agreement runs out?
It's October is when it will run out with waste management. We had to give them a year advance notice. We've done that. Of course, they didn't bid the service out, as you all know. We would start this July. It's when the county would like to start.
We would start this in July, is when the county would like to start July 1st with the company.
We got a little bit of time there?
We have a little bit of time, yes. Do you have any questions for us, Mr. Kendrick, that we need to research further for you?
No, I'd just rather wait on it a little while, because I have some other ideas.
Okay, okay. We have time.
Got plenty of time on that one, sounds like.
All right. Uh, I guess Scotty, the second truck? Thank you.
I got a few things I'd like to cover before we get to the truck, if you don't mind, sir. Uh, I'd give Arret and Blue Ridge a little bit of good news. We finally got our oxygen fee license for the cell tower, so we're due to start working on it in January finally. So that's some good news for us. Dispatch has called. But I also caught buzz of something I'm sure y'all caught buzz of too, the auto launch that we had talked about. All that is, is a recommendation to set up a helicopter on standby and get it ready to fly to us. There is no cost to that, everybody participates in it. I've talked to Henry County, I've talked to Franklin County, everybody, no matter which helicopter you use, they use the same criteria. We're not looking to switch helicopter companies. We will still, dispatch will still follow the same procedures they do now. They will contact Air Care, and if Air Care is not able to fly, they contact the next one. They do all that. We have nothing to do with that, we are not switching airports or anything like that, so that is not true. The standby is just something to cut down time, put the helicopter on standby, so they can start checking weather, they can start checking getting their blood products and everything on the helicopter that they need, that they don't keep on it, because they can keep blood on helicopters because they stay cold. That just cuts down and helps us get air to people quick. That's all that is. We're not, there is no switching companies, no change dispatch whatsoever, just, we actually don't physically have to tell them, put a helicopter on standby, they have the criteria in front of them. Henry County dispatch uses it, Franklin County dispatch uses it, everybody around us uses the same criteria. And only that's burns, falls from significant heights, which we have very likely capability now, up on 58. Auto wrecks with ejections, things of that nature, that's a standard list, and we would follow that list, which I just received the entire policy from Henry County just a second ago, who they just finally sent it to me. So that's, I want to clear that up right off the bat, we're not looking at changing from Air Care. There's no plans...
But Air Care is dispatched first?
Yes.
If a second helicopter is needed and they're not available, then the other company dispatched, correct?
Air Care calls, we call Air Care, and Air Care has a list of people they call. But we don't actually call, we don't call, we call Air Care, then they take it from there.
Okay.
So yeah, whoever's next on the list, whether it be Our Life, Lifeguard, Duke, Pegasus coming out, UVA.
They're just putting to the mix of...
Yeah, they just, they have a list of procedures they go through. And that's been determined by the board a long time ago. There's no plans to change any of that.
I'm just clarifying.
Yeah.
Well, you know, we've got a lot of calls.
Yes, I have too. I just want to make that very clear, there's no plans to change in that whatsoever. That procedure stays the same thing. It's just a list, a poster goes on the wall that says, if you get a call meets these criteria, go ahead and put a helicopter on standby and get them ready to fly. That cuts out at least 15 to 20 minutes. So and if you look at the goal, an hour, get somebody to the hospital within an hour, 20 minutes is a long time.
Would you be able to get us more, tell that lady we'd like to have more information though about her company?
Yeah, I'd be more happy to, I mean, she said she'd come back anytime we wanted to, answer the questions y'all had. I said the tower, we got great news on it finally. I think the only thing we don't have for it is the microwave. And we're actually working with Sean Atkins at the sheriff's office to get that situated. The numbers that, I don't have the numbers for this month, because the lady at dispatch hasn't given to me this, I do apologize. But I would like to go over and clarify some of that as well. The numbers that y'all get are their primary calls only. That agency, we'll just pull one out. We'll use Jipstore. Like last month, they had 126 calls, 94 they answered. But for the total for the year, they were 1,137, but they were toned 1,440 times. That's where we get a different number. A lot of people think we add in the all county calls into all calls for county, if they don't go answer, but we do not do that. These are just primary response area numbers that they get. So we don't want to think we're padding numbers, we're trying to change numbers or anything like that, that's just primary call numbers. So if they got 22, they responded now, that's their primary area. We also started negotiations with a billing company. I think we've had several exchanges with contract negotiations already, but that's moving forward as well. We look forward to getting that, and hopefully getting some of the collection portion of that going, makes it a whole lot easier as well. As far as the second truck, it was a recommendation from Dr. Etzel. We hope you take it very seriously that we need it. We still showing some black call volume from some of the stations, Blue Ridge and Arret. Like I said, I don't want to pick on them, but they are an area, they're on, they take care of each other, they do a great job. Appreciate every thing they do over there. We very seldom have to go over in that area. But in this area, we are still short volunteers, unfortunately. I hope they do get some great information to get some volunteers to go over there. But we still lacking response times, we still have some 30 and 40 minute response times to call because we're still going out. Luckily, we had an opportunity to try putting the second truck investor. During that trial period, we had two calls, one was a code, they weren't seen within five minutes. The outcome was still not good, but unfortunately, the gentleman was sick. But the second call went great. We do ask for that, we do have numbers, how much that would cost to fully fund that second truck, which we'd only need four people, because with the additions from the ones from the academy and way it's worked out, we've only need four more to fill out that second truck, which would be stationed here at nighttime until we could work out something to get them out further out in the county. But it would be a great asset. We are seeing about 130 calls at Station 8 every month now, which brings us up to a little over 1,500 calls for the, that's an increase from last year, almost 130, 140 calls. And we're not there through December yet. Laurie did put together some numbers on what it would cost us.
All right, you have before you the estimates here, we were to do a second truck.
How many, how many calls? What's y'all's response rate, Station 8?
What's Station 8? It depends where we're going in the county. The idea with the second truck is to stage that truck somewhere else other than Station 8.
I mean, right now, calls that y'all get, how many actually respond to, what's y'all's rate?
We answer every call that we can from, of the 1,500, I mean, call sheets, I've got 1,500 call sheets.
That's what I was going to ask too, I just noticed it's zero and zero, and I'm not...
Because we don't have a primary area. We cover, we pick up all the others missed calls.
It's kind of hard to compare numbers when it's like that.
Yeah. But unfortunately, we don't, so we don't have a primary area. If we had a primary area, then we, yes, we could, but we don't have a primary area. They don't calculate that.
Numbers, numbers always can be jungled around.
Yeah. I'll say, the lady at dispatch gives them to me, her name's Sharon, I don't...
Back to the thing, talking about there in the packet, Laurie, I guess that's Laurie come up with where the funds could come from? One problem I got with that, that's projected funds again, and part of it's projected on the personal property tax that we're told at night would be around 300,000, and it's projected 600,000, a whole lot of projected.
The 300,000 was what the commissioner of revenue projected was going to be, we were going to receive in 2022 over 2021. That's different from what was budgeted. We budgeted, we budget conservatively on taxes because we, it's just what you said, it's projected. But this is, these are, these are actual monies that the treasurer has actually billed, that's been verified and by the commissioner of the revenue, and that is what we expect to receive over what we budgeted, which was very conservative. So that's, this is not projected anymore, the bills have gone out, they've been billed, and that's what should come back, and she's collecting at 98%? I think she said the last time she was here? So those are actual funds that we should, that we will receive before, for this fiscal
We did try, and we did try for grants to supplement the staff, we were turned down. We did receive our Dear John letter this past week, unfortunately.
All right. Do we have any more questions?
Are you fully staffed right now?
Not sure. We're missing, we're missing four people to be fully, for the first, one truck, yes, we are fully staffed.
That's what I meant, you have one truck.
Yes, yes, sir.
How many you got for that? How many employees you got for that one truck?
Uh, we have two shifts that have four people, and two shifts that have two people.
But two, you've got two coming out of the academy?
We had two come out of the academy, that's the reason we have the extra.
Okay.
The extra.
So that's counting?
That's counting. Both of them have graduated in the field for, well, a month or so, and both of them are volunteers, or one's planning to volunteer and one is volunteering.
Is the academy training anybody now, or is...
There is no current academy running right now. There are talk of having another class, as far as that goes, that's supplement staffing on in the county. The training that they receive, we offer to the county at no charge to volunteers, the EMT classes, the firefighter classes, all that is offered to volunteers as well. There's just no dedicated academy for volunteers.
Would you be able to staff a second?
Yes, it would be a BLS truck, and we actually have several that are registered to take their advanced EMT now, that would put in advance on each, some form of A L S.
All right.
Well, you say you got two extra now?
I have two people, I have two trucks on tonight, and they are helping tremendously cover calls.
Could you get by with two more people to run the two, or you got to have four?
You have to have even number.
Two and four are even.
If you put two, then you have one shift that's going to have, one half two trucks. But it takes two people to run a truck each. To fully staff the second one, you'd have to have four. And the plan is to put those out in the county, the second truck out in the county, so the response times. And then we'd have to work with the captain of those stations, where we see the lacking part, we'd send it there.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve this?
I'll make that motion.
The salary and benefits cost, this would be two fully staffed trucks, correct, Laurie?
Sorry, yes.
Yeah. So for two fully staffed trucks and crews, the eight employees each, salary and benefits cost would be approximately 522,000.
The 522,000 would be what it would cost us through the end of fiscal year '22 to fully staff the two trucks, that's to finish paying the current staff that's there, plus add the additional for this seven, for six more months.
So it is not just one more truck, it's all of...
Yes.
All right, you had the motion. Does anybody want a second?
It is just adding 292,000 to the FY '22 budget to make that happen.
All right, I guess it dies for lack of a second. I will continue to work with our state representatives and federal representatives, I'm going up in February, to see if we can get help.
I don't, I'll make a comment too, and I don't have a thing in the world against it, Scotty, if we just figure out for sure where the money's going to come from. You got all this ARCA money that's gone, the COVID money is gone, we're not going to have that next year, where are we supposed to keep coming up with it? That's my only problem, I'd be tickled to death if you could have three trucks, but we got to pay for it.
All right, thank you. It is that time for your...
For my speed?
Yes.
I move we enter into closed meeting for the limited purpose of discussing the assignment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining or resignation of certain public employees, all pursuant to subsection A1, and discuss or consider information subject to exclusion or prioritarian voluntarily provided by a private business pursuant to a promise of confidentiality from the county related to projects saved pursuant to subsection A39, and to discuss the acquisition of real estate within the town of Stewart pursuant to subsection A3.
All right, we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Simmons?
Uh.
Mr. Kendrick?
Uh.
Ms. Starwell?
Uh.
And I vote I also, so we will enter into closed session.